Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, October 7th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for October 7th, 2024. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our presentation this evening is ICMA YCLE Fellow Introduction.
It's really tough. Good evening. Corey Burbach, Assistant City Manager. I have the pleasure of introducing a guest this evening who has come from a long way away. May Hadday is here with us from Brunei, and I'm going to let her tell you a little bit about what her goals are in just a second. But just as background for our listeners, May is here through the International City Managers Association Young Southeast Asia Leadership Initiative. And it is an initiative that is funded by the U.S. State Department that brings young leaders from all of the countries in Southeast Asia to the United States who have an interest in either sustainability or economic development or governance. There's a couple different tracks. In Dubuque, we always get the folks from sustainability, which we're always excited to have. Dubuque has been hosting fellows since 2011. I have lost track of how many friends we've made over the years, but they come to Dubuque for a month to learn about various interests. And I'm going to let May share a little bit about her background and her interest and what brought her to Dubuque. We get the opportunity to host and share the stories that are happening in Dubuque, but I always go away from the month that we have a guest here, having learned a lot myself, both about the countries and the communities that they come from. But it's an opportunity to look at our own community with a fresh set of eyes, which is really exciting. So I am pleased to introduce May for you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I am May Haddi from Brunei Darussalam. And this is actually my fourth week here in Dubuque, and it has been a pleasure. And I have a background in architecture, so it's been a pleasure to see the different buildings here, especially in the historical aspect. So for this program, the goal is to observe and learn how the city of Dubuque is doing their sustainable practices, and I hope to implement what I've learned here back to my country, Brunei Darussalam. And I will not take a lot of your time, and thank you for having me here. Good evening. Yeah.
Well, May, thank you very much for being here this evening, but especially for being here in Dubuque for the last four weeks.
Yes.
Had the pleasure to get to meet you today, actually, at lunch with Corey and the City Manager, and we were able to have some good conversation about your experiences.
Oh, yes.
I really appreciated that opportunity, so thank you very much. It is such a learning experience for us to be able to learn about the practices that you have in your country and the home countries of the other fellows that we've had.
Yeah.
But then also to learn from the questions you ask us.
Oh, yeah.
And the ideas that you bring to the table, too. So we really appreciate this time, and I know Dubuque chose you as much as you chose Dubuque for this program.
Oh, yes.
So we're glad that you were able to be here. So thank you very much for joining us.
I am grateful to be here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Corey. Okay, Adrian.
Next, our proclamations. Our first proclamation is Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Okay, and I believe I have Jenny Sheehan and Angela, is it Heister?
Heester.
Heester, thank you very much, Angela, for correcting me. Come on up. And if you'd like to say a few words before I read the proclamation, feel free.
Yep, I'll just tell you a little bit. Hi, my name is Angela Heester, and I'm an advocate for Waypoint Services in Dubuque and Delaware County. I've been with them for a little over two and a half years now. I just want to thank Mayor Brad Kavanaugh and the City Council for the Gentleman's Day Proclamation. For over 30 years, Waypoint has provided domestic violence services for the community. And in 2013, Waypoint became the comprehensive service provider for seven counties in northeastern Iowa, so including Dubuque. Waypoint Services is 100% free and confidential. It includes emotional support, individual and group counseling, access to resources and community referrals, criminal and legal advocacy, medical advocacy, and a 24/7 resource and support line. Waypoint established the Gentleman's Campaign in 2013 in an effort to spread awareness about domestic violence and encourage community involvement. Throughout the month of October, events are held that recognize the individuals, especially men, who are taking a stand with Waypoint to end domestic violence. Thank you.
Well, Angela, thank you very much for being here. We really appreciate it and appreciate the work that you do every single day.
Thank you.
No, it's really not easy work at all. It's some of the most challenging work that there is to do, so we appreciate you doing it and taking that and being a part of the entire region and not just Dubuque. So thanks for being here this evening to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas one in three women and one in four men will experience some form of domestic violence during their lifetime, and whereas intimate partner violence impacts victims, children, family, friends, and the community at large; and whereas domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but is experienced in all economic, racial, ethnic, educational, societal, and religious groups, and is sustained by societal indifference; and whereas perpetrators of domestic violence should be held accountable for their actions, and victims should have access to support and services to help them overcome their experiences; and whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide support to victims of intimate partner violence and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem; and whereas a coordinated effort from all community members is needed to put a stop to this heinous crime. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and encourage residents to support Waypoint Services in ending domestic violence, join their Gentleman Campaign on October 24th, and urge everyone to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. Come on up, Angela. Let's give her a hand, please. Thank you, David. Thanks. Okay, go ahead, please, Adrian.
Our second proclamation is Arts and Humanities Month.
All right, and we have Bonnie Sperling here to accept this proclamation this evening.
Good evening. Is this I?
It is.
My name is Bonnie Sperling, and on behalf of the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs, which is me, and the intern Mike Williams, I just wanted to thank you in advance for the proclamation and for Mayor Kavanaugh, the City Council, and the entire community of Dubuque for their unwavering and continuing support of the arts.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. Well, it won't surprise you, but I had multiple conversations, again, this weekend about how much we appreciate and support the arts in our community. And I know the city is a big part of that, but so is the community at large. And so many people, it was First Fridays again this past Friday, to be able to celebrate art in many forms. Symphony played this weekend and art in another form, and it was just so many ways that we do this. So thank you for the work that you do and for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the nation's 120,000 nonprofit arts organizations, the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for Humanities, and the nation's 4,500 local arts agencies, and the Arts and Humanities Councils of the 50 states and the six U.S. jurisdictions and districts, have regularly issued official proclamations on an annual basis designating October as National Arts and Humanities Month. And whereas, despite significant losses due to the coronavirus pandemic, the creative industries remain among the most vital sectors of the economy, providing innovative opportunities for community development, creating jobs and economic activity within their own and across sectors, and making communities attractive for tourism attraction, business development, and workforce retention. And whereas Dubuque's nonprofit arts and culture sector generates $70.4 million in economic activity annually, supporting 1,527 local jobs, and generating $6.7 million in local and state government revenue. And whereas our community prioritizes investment in grant support, public art programming, and ongoing implementation of Dubuque's Arts and Culture Master Plan. And whereas the arts and humanities embody so much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. And whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in creating connection and telling the stories of our families, communities, and country. And whereas local arts and humanities programs are dedicated to inclusive access, diverse representation, and equitable empowerment of creatives, culture bearers, and humanities scholars toward a more connected, just, and inclusive Dubuque. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Arts and Humanities Month.
Our third proclamation is Community Planning Month.
And all it says here is Planning Services Department, so I expect the entire department.
You're going to get us all except for I'm sick.
It is that time of year.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Wally, we're my Planning Services Director. I do have the entire planning department here, minus Sheena Moon. Sheena Moon is home battling a little bit of the bug, but I just wanted to introduce these great planners that help assist us with all the work. You see my face at the City Council meetings, they're doing the work, right? Really, they're the ones making the difference in our community. So we have Renee Blash, she's our Administrative Assistant in our office, Chris Hap Olsen, who gets involved with our Historic Preservation Commission and our aspects, Charlie Miller, he's a guy that people don't like to see, he's our zoning enforcement officer, but he makes a great, he makes great relations all the time, don't you, Charlie?
Try.
Jason Duba, works with our Long Range Planning Advisory Commission and our Bike, Pedestrian, and Transportation Planner. We have Matt O'Brien, he's our planning technician, he gets involved with our GIS and helps assist us every day with multiple aspects in our department. And Travis Roblesen works for our Development Services, site plans, re-zonings. And like I mentioned before, Sheena Moon, who couldn't be with us tonight, is our Associate Planner. She gets involved with managing our zoning advisory commission, our zoning board adjustment, and a lot of our site plan review. So we're very excited for National Community Planning Month. I'd just like to take note that it's community planning. We are the City Planning Department, but we are a community. City Dubuque is more than just what's inside our corporate boundaries. We are the major economic tourism growth, everything you can imagine in the tri-state area. So I always talk about a community plan because we do service, believe it or not, people outside our community, although they may not live in our area, they do contribute to our city as a whole. So we're very excited and thankful for you to read our proclamation for us. Thanks.
Well, thanks so much, Wally. I'm so glad that you were all able to make it. Charlie, we love seeing you here. Just, we love seeing you every time you're able to be here. But no, in all seriousness, in all seriousness, we really do appreciate the work that you do. We do see it on a very regular basis in this room and talk to you very frequently. And we know that when Wally's standing in front of us, it's all of you that have been doing that work, and we appreciate your voice in that process and the expertise that you have in doing it and the focus that you do have on an entire community, because that really is where your focus is, and we can tell, and I think the community sees that. So thank you so much. I'm glad we're here to celebrate an entire month for you, and thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places; and whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live; and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community; and whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and residents who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation; and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories; and whereas American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery; and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Dubuque. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the city of Dubuque, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public services by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Community Planning Month. You have a photo with a sign even. This is the most planned-out photo op that I've seen yet.
They're planning.
That's exactly right. I will hold the proclamation.
Do you guys want to get in this hall?
You want to see?
They see.
All right.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Thanks for seeing you guys. Thanks a lot.
We'll now move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages two through four of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No input.
All right, thank you much. All right, back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
I got a motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Next, our items set for public hearing. We have four. First is proceedings to set public hearing on October 21st, 2024, for the issuance of not-to-exceed $27 million sewer revenue capital loan notes, state revolving loan fund program, Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project Phase 1 for October 21st, 2024. Second is Equity and Human Rights Commission request for commissioner removal for October 21st, 2024. Third is 2024 SRF Green Alley Project Initiate Public Bidding Process and Set Date for Public Hearing for November 4th, 2024. And fourth is 2024 SRF Green Alley Project Special Assessments for November 4th, 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to Boards and Commissions. We have application review for the Resilient Community Advisory Commission and the Zoning Advisory Commission, and appointments for the Civic Center Advisory Commission and the Community Development Advisory Commission.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Our first commission review tonight is Resilient Community Advisory Commission. We have one three-year term through July 1st, 2027, and one applicant, Rachel Schmidt-Boki. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this application?
Yes, hello. I am Rachel Schmidt-Boki, 1241 Jackson Street. I've lived in Dubuque almost 11 years and have been pretty focused on resiliency since I arrived here, largely through organic vegetable farming, through my work with my own urban farm, and also at the Dubuque Rescue Mission, where I still work now as Program Manager rather than Garden Manager. But there I do a lot of work with the community, the homeless community, and wider community. And I'm, yeah, very interested in working with this commission.
Okay. All right. Rachel, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For addressing us on this. Anyone else to speak to this application? Okay, moving on then, I'm just going to assume there's no virtual input unless you jump in and yell at me. Moving on then to the Zoning Advisory Commission, we have one five-year term through July 1st, 2027, and one applicant, Troy Freusted. Do we have anyone here to address us on this application this evening?
I will just note that Mr. Freusted did submit written input to the council.
All right, thank you very much, Adrian. Okay, then we can move on to the Boards and Commission appointments. So our first appointment is for the Civic Center Advisory Commission. We have one three-year term through June 29th, 2027, and one applicant, Danielle Jacobs. So I will entertain a motion on this, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to appoint Danielle Jacobs to the Civic Center Advisory Commission.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Russell and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. The motion passes 7-0. Danielle Jacobs is appointed to the Civic Center Advisory Commission. Next, we have the Community Development Advisory Commission. Here we have one three-year term through February 15th, '26, and that is a vacant-at-large term. We also have one three-year term through February 15th, 2027, which is a vacant low-to-moderate income representative term. I will note that we have two applicants. One is Gabriel Mozina, who qualifies for the low-to-moderate income representative term. And then we also have Julie Woodard, who qualifies for the at-large term. So in this case, I think it would be most appropriate to ask for a motion for the first term, the vacant-at-large term. So Adrian and Krena, does that work for you? Okay, so I will entertain a motion for the first at-large term, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that Julia Woodard be appointed to the at-large.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones, a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Julie Woodard is appointed to the first at-large term that is listed. I will entertain a motion for the second term, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we appoint Gabriel Mozina to the low-to-moderate income representative and at-large, it says here.
This would be just for the low-to-moderate income.
Just low-to-moderate, thank you.
Yep.
Stand corrected.
Second by Sprank.
So I got a motion by Farber, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Gabriel Mozina is appointed to the second term listed.
We'll move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Our public hearing tonight is Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island Project Bid Package Number One, Site Demolition and Mass Grading Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending City Council approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and construction estimate of $1,018,000 for the Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island Project Bid Package Number One. The Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island Project will be bid as two separate contracts. Bid Package Number One, which is being considered tonight, is demolition and mass grading, and Bid Package Number Two is utilities, paving, and the amphitheater stage. Bid Package Number One includes the demolition and removal of existing structures, including the dog kennel building, site clearing, and mass grading for the amphitheater. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider the City Council approve the plan specification form of contract and construction estimate of $1,018,000 for the Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island Project Bid Package Number One. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item this evening? Seeing no one here, do we have anyone virtually?
No input.
All right. Back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing none, hearing none. Oh, Mr. Resnick.
Very quickly, and this is going to be a multimillion-dollar project altogether. Are there individual cost estimates? I noticed that the cost estimate is exactly what the price is. Is there an engineering estimate for every one of these aspects of this, you know, big project?
Yes, there will be, and of course, we'll find out what the real cost is when we bid it.
Okay, so for this individual starter project, we really didn't estimate what this was going to be.
Yes, we did. So Nate, do you want to come up and talk about the estimate, please?
Nathan Stephan, civil engineer. Yes, we did do estimates for each bid package.
So is it, am I looking at this wrong, that the estimate was exactly what the price was?
Currently, the estimate is what the price is, yep.
Did we just nail it, or how did that work?
We're, yes, we're developing the project within the budgeted estimate.
Okay, it just looked kind of funny that we estimated $1,018,000 and we nailed it. We got it right on the button. So, I mean, it must be part of a package, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And the package is, what do we call in that whole package? The entire project or?
Yeah, the entire amphitheater project consists of Bid Package One and Bid Package Two. Bid Package One would be the demolition of the kennel buildings and the mass grading. Bid Package Two, which will be bid out later this year, is the stage, the artful canopy, the pavement, and landscaping.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So just for clarity, we have already initiated the public bidding process based on the memo here.
For Bid Package One.
Yep, sorry to cut you off there. And then, so, and we published the notice, and we're receiving those bids now. So we'll find out what those bids come back as. So the city manager's point, I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but what you're saying is that we're gonna find out if our estimate is accurate enough, because the bids we receive back might come in higher than that or lower than that. But we expect that this is generally, based on our estimate of looking at all the details, this is generally what we expect this to cost, and would hope that the bids come in within that general figure. Is that accurate?
As part of the design that is occurring for Bid Package Two, we have optional add-ons to the base bid, so that when we do receive bids, we can kinda choose those in order, in order to kinda fine-tune the project within our budget.
I see. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, is my misunderstanding. I thought we had already gotten these bids back.
Gotcha.
And so this is our beginning of that. So pardon for that, but I didn't have that information correct. Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to have clarity, at least. Okay. All right, any other discussion questions? Then let me just say, you know, we have talked about this extensively. I just wanna make sure everybody knows that. This is something we've been talking about for years. So I'm really excited, and I think, based on the conversations we've had here, I think the council shares this excitement, to see this moving forward at this point, and all this work finally coming to fruition in this way. We know that this work does need to begin this year, so that's the point of moving this forward now, and looking forward to being able to see that work continue this year, because it will be some major progress in an area that has stood the same for a very long time. So it'll be exciting to see. Okay. Motion here on the table is to receive and file, adopt this resolution. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrienne. Do we have any public input this evening? Looking for anyone here. No one here in chambers so far. Anything virtually?
No input.
Thank you both. Go on once, go on twice? Okay, we can move on to action items, please, Adrienne.
Action item number one is off-premises sign regulations.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and discuss among council.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Russell and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. During the discussion of two public hearings on the rezoning of property located at 27 and 35 Locust Street, the former Bridge Restaurant, city council asked if a billboard or off-premise sign can be placed on the proposed building. Planning staff noted that an off-premises sign could not be placed on the building due to proximity to other off-premises signs in the area. This memo and associated documents are to provide information on the current off-premise sign regulations. Planning Services Director Wally Wernamont is recommending city council approve one of the following on the current off-premises sign regulations to ensure that our signage policies effectively balance commercial interest, the aesthetic and functional integrity of our neighborhoods. Choice number one is provide direction to planning staff to prepare an amendment to the city code on off-premise signs of the Unified Development Code. Choice number two is adopt the attached ordinance approving a temporary building permit moratorium to allow time for off-premise signs be analyzed through the Unified Development Code update process that's being conducted starting this year. Or option number three, take no action and review as part of the Unified Development Code update, which would be the current situation. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval of one of the three options.
Thank you, Mike. Wally, I'm gonna kick us off by just asking you to come up right away, so we don't have to have any guessing about that. You know, I have a couple of questions as we start this. You know, this is a, because I kinda wanna set the stage a little bit. This is a pretty, this is a brand-new issue for us to discuss. This isn't something we've really looked at before as a council. We, at least since I think those of us, most of us sitting here have been here. I don't think we've really looked at this particular issue. But the reason, is it accurate to say that the reason this kinda came up in conversation was because of the questions that were asked during the, during this, the discussion of the Locust property, the one that's down there where the former Bridge Restaurant was going? When we were talking about that rezoning, is that generally when this conversation began?
A combination, a combination of things. So one, Mr. Resnick had a lot of questions with the past public hearings with regards to off-premise signage. But not only that, we did receive some concerns from citizens located on Washington Street. There's a recent billboard that went up, located on a car lot or a car wash lot down there, and questions got brought up. It's like, I didn't think we could put any more billboards up in the city. So during the discussion, we said this will be an opportunity for us to provide information to the city council with regards to distances between billboards and how that works, if one's removed and one's being replaced. That's not only the billboard that just recently went up. We just approved a billboard last week that's going up on Dodge Street, and there's another billboard that went up on Pennsylvania Street. So there is a lot of activity right now with a lot of billboard locations. They're finding some spots that meet the separation requirements, and staff feels that it'd be a good time to have a conversation with the city council. We're going through the Unified Development Code currently, right now, with consultants under contract. And we have a couple of options where if we put a moratorium in, that allows us to pause and wait, and wait until the Unified Development Code has gone through the process, which is March of 2026. Otherwise, we continue to move forward, or you guys can provide direction. If you feel there's a concern with the amount of billboards, or if you've reviewed some of the Iowa City other regulations and want to provide some direct direction right now, that's a possibility, too. But it was a combination of a couple of things, and it just really brought to light during those rezoning requests, so.
Got it. That's really helpful. And you answered one of my other questions about the Unified Development Code. So it would be if we were to go forward with a moratorium, I mean, we could essentially come up with whatever type of plan we really want to as far as a moratorium goes. But essentially, what you're asking us, based on what we have in ordinance written here, is to do that until March of 2026. Is that correct?
Right. It's a pause to March of 2026. And if I could add, the Unified Development Code, we are reaching out to the sign contractors. And the consultant has asked for stakeholder groups, so they'll be meeting with the sign contractors, billboards, they get involved with that. So there'll be direct input from the outdoor advertising opportunities as we move forward through the Unified Development Code update.
Okay. I have one other question, then I'll open it up for all the rest of us. You had a pretty extensive list of what other cities are doing. And I think you commented on this, but I struggled to find any real threads of a theme that went through. I mean, it was so wildly different for everybody. Why is it so different for every single city?
It's wildly different because not every city's the same. So there's a lot of times people try to compare City of Dubuque to Milwaukee or West Des Moines or an Iowa city. We're all different. We're all, Iowa's oldest city. We have different separation. They have different thoroughfares and highways that go through their communities. There are some newer establishing suburbs that are growing fast. So for instance, you see Ankeny just says, "We're not allowing any billboards, new billboards." Where you have like, for instance, Cedar Rapids is, "We're gonna allow all the ones that are up right now, and if you take one down, you can put another one up." But other, some other communities are having various setbacks from residential. You'll see some are just from ag districts or commercial districts, separations all over the place. So it's pretty, it's pretty wide open, so.
It's very interesting.
I can't answer your question specifically.
No, that was actually a pretty good answer in an unspecified manner, so. All right, we'll move on to other questions. Ms. Wethel.
I'll just kick us off. There were, so I was fascinated and probably needed to rip myself away from how different every city is and start scratching my head as to why. But one thing I had a question on, as it relates to the separation from district structures or uses. We are 100 feet from historic districts, but we have no boundary for parks, open space, educational facilities, public museums, government administration, historic district or structure. Just the historic district, sorry.
Just city-designated historic districts.
And so whereas Iowa City restricts on all of those items, includes their historic district. But is that something that's ever been looked at in our city to create a separation based on a park or a school, or have, has there been? And I'm sorry if I missed it somewhere, and goodbye.
Oh, no, no, no. So our previous to 2009, our ordinance was 1985. And in 2009, we did an update. We basically updated the Unified Development Code. So there was a sign committee that was created at that time, just like we're gonna be having with this update. There was conversation about signage, but there wasn't quite as a concern, mainly because there was a change in the Unified Development Code that required separation at a greater distance, which, when that went through, it eliminated a lot of spots where billboards could have been allowed previously. And that's that diagram that you see with all the distances that are associated with it. So that's what we have, but I agree with you. A lot of the communities are like, it's like, look at the aesthetics and sightlines from parks, hospitals, churches, some of those institutional facilities and buildings. And we'll have those conversations. And, you know, the great thing about it is we're gonna go through a public planning process, and we'll be able to bring that before our steering committee and the community as a whole, and then as you guys, as the overseeing governing body, so.
Mr. Jones.
I think a moratorium makes sense here. I don't normally think those are a good idea, but this is clearly a good idea. We're in a lot of flux. We've got, the work is in progress to create a better ordinance. And nobody wants to start working on a billboard project and then find out that they can't have it come March. The fair thing to the sign companies and the fair thing to citizens, I think, is to hit the pause button on this one and give us time to work it out. I do remember during President Johnson's chairman office, his first lady, Lady Bird Johnson's thing was beautifying America's roadsides and getting rid of billboards. And it's like Iowa listened, and if you drive into South Dakota, it's like they didn't. They're everywhere and frequent, and you can find your way to Waldrug pretty easy. Just follow the trail of billboards from anywhere as soon as you hit the state. But I think we've got a nice balance in Dubuque. There are a lot of outdoor advertising opportunities. The companies are doing a good job of keeping the signs updated and clean and nice. And I don't think we wanna add a whole lot more without a lot of consideration in the development, Unified Development Code revamping will give it exactly that due consideration and process to get us to a fair solution. So I'm gonna, in a while, make the motion that we adopt the ordinance, creating the moratorium.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I always appreciate your history lessons. That's a new one for me. I didn't remember that one about Lady Bird, so thank you. Ms. Russell.
You would've been like eight.
Not born quite yet, yeah. Ms. Russell.
Thank you for this opportunity to kinda look at this topic. And I agree with Mr. Jones that I think a moratorium makes sense, knowing full well that you're looking at the Unified Development Code. You talked a little bit about the public planning process. So can you kinda tell me who might be involved in that? Who are you gonna be reaching out to so that we have a really good amount of balanced input on that new, the new approach?
Right, so we're gathering that stakeholder list right now, where the consultant will interview. So we will have the off-premise billboard companies will be part of that discussion. We also have our zoning board adjustment members and zoning advisory commission members. Those are the individuals that are looking at reviewing sign ordinances and reviews and those. But then the community at large, so those are opportunities where we can reach out to various agencies or individuals that may have interest in those. So Dubuque Main Street is an opportunity, some of the west-end business owner trip groups. There's just a lot of opportunity for us to reach out for that stakeholder list. It hasn't been completely compiled yet at this time, but we definitely would take suggestions if you have some more.
Awesome. And then you said a steering committee. Is that just staff? Or, I think there was something in the memo, but just if you could refresh my memory.
Yeah, so the steering committee with the Unified Development Code is comprised of city staff, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, some other members with regards to it. And those are things where we're taking the code through. And so what will happen is, we'll do Unified Development Code, we'll have the public output outreach to the community engagement. We'll bring all the information together, and then we'll have a series of work sessions where we'll come through and we'll talk about individual sections where we can report out to the community as a whole. And then we'll go through and we'll have public hearings that'll go through the process. But our goal is to get as much community engagement as possible, so we get those opinions and those opportunities to be able to be heard, because, once again, it's National Community Planning Month, right? So we're here to listen to our community and help future growth.
So once again, if someone has a concern about this particular topic, now's the time to let us know your ideas and your concerns.
And that's, to be honest with you, it's a life of a planner. We gotta balance the interest of individuals who are pro-outdoor advertising and some that are maybe not. And we can have the conversation and have that compromise, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Farber.
Just wanna, just another comment regarding Ms. Wethel's comment. To me, less is more in regard to balancing commercial with the aesthetic and functional integrity of the neighborhoods. And so I would hope that the parks, the schools, the hospitals, the churches, neighborhoods are really looked at in terms of whether or not it's considered a nuisance or not in the air for those people and for the liveliness and the energy of the neighborhoods. But I also agree that we should take a moratorium and have some food for thought on that. Thank you.
Mr. Resnick.
Very quickly, I just gotta confirm this. So the moratorium is on new locations, right? So the current sign locations are a go still, and people are still in business.
Right, yes, correct. New location, new construction of billboards.
Just to clarify for the citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Real quick, before we get too close to Mr. Jones actually making the motion that he said he's gonna make, I'd like to just give us some, just to say that basically, since this is so brand-new, I'm curious if maybe using a first reading for this particular motion could be useful. I'm open to discussion on this, obviously, but I just think that it could be a useful time to do that rather than waiving all three readings, just to give people a little bit of time to follow up with us for the next couple of weeks. We can always, with that opportunity, we can always skip the second reading and go straight to the final adoption of the ordinance in that next meeting. But I would suggest that potentially in this case, just given the fact that this is, this is a very new concept in what we're doing. But I'm open to any discussion on that. I just thought I'd throw that out there. Ms. Wethel.
I would be in agreement with that. I think that's wise of you to mention. I think that makes a lot of sense in the setting of something that's not been addressed since 2009. And before that, 1985, that's a really long span of time. So I think we should be thoughtful so that a council 10 and 15 years from now doesn't need to do a lot of. I don't wanna dial it in so far that there's not the ability to adapt it. But I do think it's interesting, even when we look at size of sign, the drastic difference, and then the opportunity to say, well, if it's in a certain area, as we have done before, if it's in a certain area, let's limit the size versus a different area. In 2009, we didn't have the digital sign capacity that we have now. I mean, in considering what digital signage is versus, you know, static signing even. I think there's so many nuances to consider here. So we look forward to the public input in the next, maybe, you know, weeks to come if we do additional readings, and then the community engagement of all the stakeholders involved, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I'd like to, I appreciate your concern for citizens and their input. But of course, you know, if they see that we're very interested in a moratorium, wouldn't this be a good time, these next two weeks, to buy some more locations for signs? That, to prepare for a moratorium now, they have these more signs. And if we wanna allow that to happen, then we could say that. But of course, that's a real possibility, unless, Mr. Wernamont, it's impossible to really do in two weeks. And this'll simply be a nice time to gather information. But, you know, if I was a sign person with some investment money available, I might take these next two weeks and get some good spots laid out.
Right, so I was, this was buzzing in my head as soon as we talked about the first reading. So I'm gonna look to Krena for a little bit on this discussion, but obviously, there's no ordinance in place. So if we were to receive an application for an off-premise billboard sign tomorrow, there's a vested interest, I believe, that's in there, and they would be able to just go ahead and put the billboard up, even though you're having a conversation right now. So when that discussion was brought forward, the concern that I have is, just what you mentioned, Mr. Resnick, is as we do additional readings, there may be opportunities where people are moving forward faster with the billboards. Now, granted, we've only had, we've had three in the last year. Before that, we really haven't had very many billboards put up, more switched out to the digital-style signage as opposed to the static signage. So my personal opinion as a planner, I would have concerns about maybe getting an influx of applications coming in, which then they would have a vested right, which would not, would not, they'd have to be, we'd have to process them and approve them. Is that correct, Krena?
Wally's terminology is correct, that if somebody has an application in and is pending, assuming they meet all of the requirements for the location, they would have a vested right in having that approval granted to them prior to implementation of a moratorium.
So what we're asking for is just to pause. Let's pause for, until March of 26, and then we can have that conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I agree with you, and I agree with Mr. Resnick, in that order. Had my mind changed twice sitting here. I think the right thing to do is to make the motion to waive the readings and see where that goes. And March is only five months away, and there's gonna be a boatload of opportunity.
Clarification, March of 26. Ooh. So more like 17 months away is what we're looking at here. So it is, it's along.
Right, I'm gonna, move first reading, move to receive and file the documents, and move first reading and consideration of the ordinance.
We have a motion.
I'm fine with that. Second.
So we have a motion and a second on first reading of the ordinance. So let's, I'll open up to discussion on that particular motion on the table then for this moment. So, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, what this'll do is open a window and tell our next council meeting, at which time I'll make a motion to waive the additional readings and move this along. So it's kind of in between doing three readings and doing one, is my intent. And that may fail in two weeks.
I appreciate that, Mr. Jones. I have to admit that, even though I've now made this suggestion, and here we sit with this motion. this suggestion, and here we sit with this motion on the table, I actually have to admit that, you know, given what you've just shared with us, Wally and Krena, it does make me nervous to just go ahead and move forward with this with a two-week window that would allow someone to just then make a run on putting up billboards, which is exactly what we're trying to avoid in this particular situation. So I am, I am concerned about that. And, and, you know, this is, this is an uncomfortable position. I don't know if you can see the discomfort that we're sitting in right now. I feel like I'm physically squirming. But I do want, I do want really ample public input on this, and we're going to get it. I mean, we're going to get it through this process. But there are some very real and immediate concerns with really the integrity of our, of our community. I mean, what we, what we see and what we experience on a daily basis. And I think that those concerns are valid enough that I, given this information, I would prefer that we move forward with waiving all the readings tonight, and then actually having the discussion following that that will allow us to just discuss without billboards flying up, for example. And I think that that discussion will be there. It doesn't, just because we waive those at this point, doesn't mean that we close that off. But it does, given that particular detail, it's a pretty important one that I think is something we need to consider as we talk about this. Mr. Mayor. Sure, Mr. Jones.
I'm going to get a reputation here in five minutes of being wishy-washy after being a pretty firm decision maker for almost 20. I'd like to withdraw my motion and modify it with the permission of the second here.
Yeah, second.
Okay. We've got permission from Mr. Sprank.
I'm going to move to receive and file the communications and further move that a requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings, prior to the meeting at which this to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
All right. So we have a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank to receive and file and waive the three readings on this ordinance. So further discussion on this motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
As I continue to process all the thoughts going through my mind on this, the council still has the opportunity, if we get overwhelming outcry that this was a bad move, which I don't think it is, that we could revisit it at the next meeting or at any meeting between now and March of 26. So this is, I've decided this is a good move.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a very good point, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Other discussion on this. I want to make sure I ask, just to make sure that, are we clear on the motion that's on the table to receive and file, waive the three readings? Now, it's what we would be moving forward with?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So nothing further from any of us. All right. Then with that motion, that it was made by Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Sprank, Adrian, call the roll, please.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number two is request for proposals for Historic Millwork District Outdoor Community Space Engagement Design Construction Management.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and approve. Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Planning Services Director Wally Wernamont, on behalf of the Historic Millwork District Outdoor Community Space Request for Proposals, or RFP Committee, recommends that the City Council approve the RFP for Historic Millwork District Outdoor Community Space Engagement Design and Construction Management, and then direct staff to post the RFP and initiate the consultant selection process. The total budget for all consultant services, construction, and project costs is $400,000. By approving this, the City Council is beginning the process to do a public engagement process to seek input on design options for this space, and the design recommendation will be brought back to City Council before any action is taken to implement a construction project. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion.
Mr. Resnick. Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, Mr. Wernamont, could you tell me how this could possibly cost $400,000? What actually goes into this?
Yeah. So the $400,000 is set up for the process in order to do basically everything from hiring the contractor to doing the community engagement involved with creating the concept plan, going through the bidding process, initiating bid, construction management. It's a whole litany of things. And this is the process that the Parks Department is using currently right now for the three neighborhood parks that are being constructed, Eagle Valley, Westbrook Subdivision, and English Ridge Park. So in conversations with Marie Ware, Leeser Services Director, about what's the approach, this seems to be the most, the best way to approach this project. With regards to the overall $400,000 amount, that will involve quite a few things. As you look in the master plan, the Millwork District Master Plan, there's been a lot of discussion and community engagement of what this park could be. I actually have more concerns that the $400,000 probably is not enough when we said, comes at the end. The main concern right now would be going through the development, the process, the engagement, the conceptual plan. But then the dollar amounts caused removing the pavement, grading, seating of the site. And then that's the basics. And then through the conceptual plan, then we're going to look at, is there going to be an opportunity for an outdoor performance stage? There's been discussion about, you know, park-like settings, benches, all the different amenities that are definitely associated with it. So as we go through that process and the outcome comes through with it, we'll have a better grasp on what the total dollar amount. But I think it's going to wind up being more $400,000, and it may be more of a phased approach with different aspects included in it. But the $400,000 isn't just to pay that consult, everything, it's for everything up to that, to that point.
I see. So Leeser Services did something similar to that for three parks that you mentioned. Did they spend $1.2 million on that?
I'm not sure what the dollar amount is for all those. I wasn't involved directly with those. So the $1.2 million is what you're asking for?
Yeah, it's three times $400,000.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't have that number in front of me.
Well, we're going to go out for bids, right? So, I mean, if it doesn't cost that one, they won't bid that one. So they're just saying we're going to go out to bid and see what they're, see what it comes back.
Correct.
We're not authorizing up to 400 hours, $400,000, but we are saying we kind of expect that to be the amount.
$400,000 is what we have to work with, so.
That's what we have. All right, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
I think this needs some clarification. So all we're going to do now is the public engagement process. The $400,000 includes constructing the new park. That comes next. I just wanted to tell you, what is our total budget for this project? It's not the budget for the public engagement process. That won't cost anywhere near that.
Great. So thank you. And it says for all consultant services plus construction and project costs. And so our budget is $400,000, and that's for everything.
Right. And that's where Wally says it probably won't be enough, because constructing a park is expensive. That's the amount of money we have in the budget now. And once we go through the public engagement process and the design and all that, then we'll know what the number should be. And maybe it will be within $400,000. And of course, we'll find that out through the final construction bid when you approve that. And you're not approving that now.
Thank you very much. And so the consultant will know of up-to-date costs for parks generally, and that's part of what they're doing, giving us data to make good decisions.
Correct.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for you, Mike. What happens if in the public response there is a big outcry of they don't want to lose this parking, even though we just heard in our parking work session that we have ample parking? What happens if that, if that is the direction that the citizen input turns into? What do we do then?
Well, then, in the, in the end, it's going to be your decision as the mayor and city council. So after we bring you back the public input and the cost estimates and all the rest, you could say, well, thank you very much. We're not building that park. We're going to keep the parking lot.
Thank you.
Ms. Wethel.
I was trying to find the spot in which I saw it, and you had mentioned it, Mr. Wernamont, about exactly what we're talking about putting here and what our goal for the space is. First of all, I'm in agreement with you. When I heard $400,000, I thought, man, that sounds like the tip of the iceberg of what this is going to cost. I have to be honest. I'm a little concerned about price. And so as we have these conversations, I appreciate all of the shareholders who, I appreciate the council, who, you know, had the foresight to understand that this parking space was temporary. It was intended to be temporary. It was never meant to be permanent. It was transitional parking with the goal to eventually have green space in this area. And so our council, with great foresight, made those choices back many years ago, and I'm grateful for that. But a couple of things that I considered, and I want to make sure this gets to one plan talking to another plan, which is, we want an outdoor passable performing space there. Do we also want an outdoor performing space on Central Avenue at the curve? Are we duplicating those spaces? Do we need to? The cost of that, I'm concerned, will be significant. Do we just want to park? Do you want, do we want a place where we could have spread out of Millwork Market Night? I think there's so many opportunities that we have to learn from our stakeholders who will participate in these sessions. And so I'm anxious to receive their feedback. And I want folks to reach out to me, too. So I look forward to having a real clear analysis of what they say and what my constituents say. This is in Ward Four, and I want to hit it out of the park. I want to make it right. And I think that this is an opportunity of incredible placement of green space. If we want to grow an area in which our town is going to see significant density in housing, we have to have more green space in that. And this is the perfect location in my eyes. So I look forward to hearing feedback from everyone involved, the stakeholders. I appreciate your feedback tonight.
Can I add something? Thank you for saying that. Because in the Historic Millwork District, our focus is people. We need to get residents living downtown. And there's an opportunity. Where is our opportunity to recreate? Where is the green space? Where is all those spaces are out? Now, we have them scattered throughout the community. We have Washington Park, Jackson Park, Prescott Elementary School, and stuff like that. But we're concentrating in quite a few residences located in the Historic Millwork District. We have the Farley Lecture Building that's going through rehabilitation project. We had a development agreement for a potential Millwork Flats development. We have the Natalie Allen Worksburg, the Crutchmer Treadway property. Who knows what's going to happen with the other buildings as we move forward. And you get a higher concentration of those spaces. But where are they going to go outside and just recreate, enjoy nature, take advantage of that space? So that was the foresight when they did the Historic Millwork District Master Plan way back in 2010, which was also a result of Division 2010. This is what our citizens wanted this area to be redeveloped. And I was involved in the process when the site plan came into my office. And I'm like going, okay, we're going to put a temporary parking lot in? Temporary parking lot, to me, is six months. It's been there for quite a few years. And when you have something there that's been there for quite a while, people get used to it, right? And then when it goes away from them, there's going to be concerns from individuals. I included information in there from the Historic Preservation Commission when we talked about the parking ramp, the temporary use of the property. So as we want to be more of an urban focused, let's get more people in the downtown, we need to have those cool, unique spaces to be able to take advantage of that. And who knows? That's what the community engagement's for. It could be an outdoor event space. It could be just greens place and trees. We have a nice grant for trees for everything. So a bunch of opportunities.
I have a question, Wally. The steering committee that's listed on here, where does that fit in? I wasn't really clear on where the steering committee is going to fit in and how they'll be utilized, and at which point in the process.
Right. So we're, they're definitely going to be engaged in the entire process. So we have the RFP review committee, and then we have the steering committee. And the steering committee will be involved with meeting with the consultant, with the conceptual development plan layout. And you see the members that are listed on there. There's a lot more than just city staff. Some people just think it's city staff. No, there's a lot of opportunity for the existing property owners, business owners, and then just the public at large. So I want everyone just to think that this park is just for the Historic Millwork District people. It's not. It's for the entire community. So we have opportunities for a couple individuals who may not be directly in the area. But yeah, it'll definitely be involved with consulting with them, taking them through the process, doing some of those individual concept plans. And they'll make a recommendation that'll come before you guys for your final approval. But prior to that, there's public engagement. Everything gets involved with opening up to the public, taking that input in, and just having a little bit more of a focus on there. Because a lot of the people that are listed on there are going to be directly impacted by that. But then there's also individuals included in there that are, at the community at a whole, we need the voice, so.
Great. Thank you, Wally. That's helpful. Okay. Well, thank you for answering all our questions. Motion here on the table is to receive and file and approve the RFP, and then also direct staff to post the RFP and initiate the consultant selection process. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number three is public safety software recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Wethel, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief of Police Jeremy Jensen is recommending City Council approval to enter into a contract with Central Square Technologies for public safety software for the city of Dubuque and its partner public safety agencies, and give authorization to the mayor to sign the contract. The city of Dubuque and Dubuque County agreed to again partner for this software replacement project. The total cost of the project will be split evenly between the city of Dubuque and Dubuque County. Total cost of the project was estimated at $3 million. As part of the fiscal year '25 budget process, the Dubuque City Council approved up to $1.5 million to cover the city of Dubuque's portion of the project. Central Square has given a quote of $2,6,981.11 as the total cost for the replacement project. Cost will be split 50/50 between the city of Dubuque and Dubuque County. The cost of the city of Dubuque is $1,3,490.06, and will cover all departments of the city using the system, police, fire, and 911. The annual recurring subscription cost is $376,372.16, starting in fiscal year '26. This is also split 50/50 between the city and the county. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
No, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to express my appreciation for all those who are willing to collaborate with the city and the council. Obviously, some really good things can happen there. And it just seems that every time we collaborate with the county, good things happen. So I hope that continues. And it really is a win-win, and I'm very excited about the results of this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Farber.
Yes, I have a couple of questions about the public safety records and some of the relationships, and some of the insurance coverage, and some of the personal data. So I don't know, maybe it's, if it's a Krena question, or if it's Chief Jensen's question. But in overlooking the contracts, I noticed that the issue on security, I couldn't figure out what happens in the event of a breach. And I did see through the document that there was a cybersecurity data breach insurance policy for $5 million. And I just didn't know if, and I don't, maybe Mike might know this as well, if it's tied into our overall security insurance, or if, because it's with the county and the city, if there's a relationship there or not.
Yeah, good question. Jeremy Jensen, Chief of Police. So to answer your question, the city IT department oversees both city and county IT in our building. So it is part of that. IT was part of our selection process with this, and actually led, led the initiative for replacement of the software.
Okay. And are you aware that some of their developers overseas, and that there's a clause in here that gives them permission to have our data extended overseas to a foreign country?
So that, I have not reviewed this particular contract. I believe Barry worked on that in our office. But that would have been reviewed by he and Chris Coleman as part of this process. And what often happens, which I know you all know, with software agreements pretty regularly, is we like to make suggestions or requests for changes, and they are not particularly open to doing so. they are not particularly open to doing so. Um, but we do ask whenever we can to try and limit things like that.
Mm-hmm.
But when push comes to shove in the end, if we need the software and they have the requirement and they're not willing to change it, it is oftentimes something that we do have to agree to.
Okay. Well, just a heads up, because they do have standard operating procedures, or some of their developers may be overseas. But the language in the text, um, I was just concerned whether or not it had your eyes on it or the IT eyes on it, because sometimes it can be very loose. And, and in terms of who owns the data versus who transfers the data, there's a differential between that. And I don't mean to get into the details of all the contract, but I think there is, just, um, on behalf of the public records, because it's all three of our public safety groups here, both police, fire, and EMS that citizens might be concerned a bit.
So, um, one other thing I will just mention is when it comes to the, the technical specifications and whether something does or not, does or does not work from an IT standpoint, we rely on our experts in the information technology department, as we are not
Okay.
subject matter experts in that field.
Mm-hmm.
And we ensure that they have reviewed it, and they have a comfort level with it. And we review where they have concerns, and we determine if there's ways to edit that language. And then, um, we work with them on that. And then we address the, the legal components
Sure.
where we think
Yeah, no, I understand. I know a lot of it is standard operating procedures, but I just, I've been doing my due diligence about breaching and, uh, just about some of the technical terms. Just want to make sure that we were covered in that. I, you know, have complete, um, you know, it's good to know that Chris's team had her, had the eyes on it and that you did as well. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any others? I have a question about cost. You know, I, I understand that our system that we're currently using, and you made this pretty clear in your memo, uh, 2014, we really need to modernize. And, um, I appreciate that. I am just curious, though, is this, is this a pretty substantial increase in cost on an annual basis? The, and I know we're splitting this 50-50, but the $376,000 that is being split?
It's almost the same.
Really?
So we just wrote the check for our current subscription, which was $180,000. So really, pretty much the same. Maintenance agreement, subscription, I guess you, how you title it. Now it's subscription, before it was maintenance agreement. Um, but yeah, that's, it's pretty, pretty close, I think, to what 2014 was on, on the cost of things. Um, a lot of it's gotten a lot more streamlined and, and, you know, technology's just gotten better on that, so.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. Okay. Well, motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is work session request, automated license plate reader update.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Russell?
I move to receive and file and set the work session for October 21st at 5:30.
Second?
Motion, Ms. Russell, second by Resnick. We received that, so hopefully everybody's able to do it before a council meeting. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next, our council member reports.
It's been a few weeks. Guessing we did a few things. Ms. Wethel?
I'll get started, but I hope Mayor Kavanaugh will speak a bit more about it. Uh, on, uh, September 20th, Mayor Kavanaugh, I'd like to congratulate you as you were appointed to President of the Iowa League of Cities. Um, I had the privilege to attend with colleagues here, and, um, it was the first time I had been able to attend a conference for Iowa League. And I will tell you, the, um, the importance of that is much, uh, similar to when I professionally, in my nurse practitioner role, go to a conference. Um, it's a learning experience. It's continuing education, but it's also learning what different cities who are comparable to us in size, who maybe aren't, and what they're struggling with, what they're trying to tackle, and how it might relate to our city. Um, I was very impressed with, uh, what Sioux City has done with their Riverwalk area. I thought a lot of it actually is comparable to what we as a city are trying to do, whether that's adapting some of their ideas to Schmidt Island as we look forward. But, um, I'm very grateful for that opportunity, very proud to be there to support you. Um, additionally, on, uh, September 24th, I had the privilege to tour with Jenna Hertz at the, um, Arboretum, Dubuque Arboretum and Botanical Gardens, to learn more and review their new master plan. And then, um, firsthand, got to, uh, go around the, the gardens and see the vision firsthand. Um, really enjoyed that opportunity. And I forgot how pretty the gardens are this time of the year. So if anybody hasn't been out lately, um, boy, it's, it's something to see. Um, and then, uh, on, um, I think, uh, both, uh, council member Russell and I attended the Connecting Communities in the Americas Conference, which was at the National River, Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium. And we had international attendees from 13 different countries and territories here, actually, to learn about our best practices, uh, through the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque. And it was just a privilege. And, um, they were very impressed with what we are doing, specifically as it relates to, in our city, with our partners, with brain health initiatives for our children. Um, it was, it was wonderful. As we speak a little bit about the Arts and Humanities Month, I also wanted to mention, there is a wonderful event going on this weekend. Um, actually, not this weekend, the next weekend, uh, October 18th through the 20th, uh, the 20 Dirty Hands, um, pottery tour, which is a regional tour, not just of, um, potters here in Dubuque, but in our area. And so get online and check it out. It looks like a really fun event.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Farber?
And speaking of calendar in the month of September, I had the honor to represent Dubuque at the FCC Commission Meeting on September 25th and 6th. Uh, and, um, very much, uh, impressed by the commissioners and the presentations that they had made. Um, it was a public meeting, and it was the first time that we had had our, actually, our meeting face-to-face in Washington. Uh, so it was quite interesting and a pleasure to, um, represent Dubuque as we're working on our FCC document, which will be published in a year and a half. Uh, and then I held concurrent meetings with both, both Google and the National League of Cities while I was in DC. And happy to announce that the Google AI, uh, combined, um, roadmap that we're doing for AI will be published at the National League of Cities, uh, conference in Tampa at the end of this year.
Thank you, Ms. Farber.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Jones?
I've got a pretty long list here, too. Um, Wednesday, September 18th, I was at the ribbon cutting for Quickstar's new, uh, service center and truck stop on, uh, Kriper Boulevard, actually, Kriper Court. And that's where we recently constructed a roundabout with the help of that company. And I heard a lot of, uh, uninformed public, um, criticism of what is, is a roundabout going to nowhere? Well, I'll tell you what, that roundabout's going to the municipal services facility, it's going to Bard Concrete, it's going to Lamar advertising, it's going to this, uh, truck stop that's going to generate a lot of traffic. And it's humming down there. Um, it's a significant addition, because I think it's one of the keystones to advancing redevelopment of Kriper Boulevard and some of the properties down there that have been idle. So it's, it's a pretty exciting morning. A lot of folks there. That was a nice one. And that evening, a number of us were at the groundbreaking for Wanderwood Gardens at the Arboretum. Um, all I got to say is it's going to be spectacular beyond, um, anything we dreamed of recently. And, uh, this is pretty exciting. Next morning, I got up and I welcomed the Surveyors Historical Society to Dubuque. It's an international group of, of, uh, civil engineers and land surveyors that have an interest in history. They found Dubuque interesting because it's pretty historic. And they talked, uh, that, uh, two of our, um, engineering department staff surveyors presented at this international conference in Dubuque on some of the history of post, uh, post-Louisiana purchase, and starting to figure out what's where in this area. And Dubuque became a surveying center because it was one of the first developed areas at all, um, and kind of a key to the West, as, you know, we've always considered ourselves as well. So that was kind of interesting to hang out with those cats for, for a little bit in the morning. And even more interesting, but not unusual, to find our city staff presenting at a conference, um, because they're pretty good at what they do. Laura hosted us all at a wonderful event Saturday, the 21st, as a tree was planted, um, in, in memory of, uh, council member Joyce Connors. Um, quite a few of us were at that, and it was, uh, it was a very nice, uh, afternoon. Um, 24th of September, I went out to Field of Dreams with the Travel Dubuque Outreach Committee, and it was just, uh, an opportunity to look around and see the, the improvements. But, uh, the old barn is now a pretty full-functioning reception hall with, uh, with running water and toilets and all that kind of, you know, modern stuff. Um, and, uh, Brian's dressing room, and it's just a really neat facility for an event. Um, the turf on the Major League Field looks, looks really great. Um, we're seeing some, um, administrative progress anyway, moving towards, uh, some, some other things happening out there. Um, but that was just kind of an exciting evening. Probably the best one I got to do, second best one I got to do, was the 26th on Thursday, um, did a ribbon cutting at the Lincoln Playground. And we had some CDBG money, some significant CDGB money, redeveloped the playground equipment there. And as, uh, Dubuque Community Schools tends, tends to do, they, they went well beyond that small investment and, uh, created a, a really interesting campus, which of course is open to the neighborhood when school's not in session, which is a kind of a neat thing that the schools do across town. But that was a, a really uplifting experience, uh, to be part of that one. Um, I don't want to take the wind out of your sails, but I want to put a little in it. Um, the 1st of October, we were all out at the airport to preview Denver Air and take a look at one of their aircraft, and meet some of their staff, and talk about what, what that's going to be. And every time I would say to the mayor, congratulations, look what you did, he'd say, that was a lot of people. But every time I've talked to any one of those lot of people, they say, Brad Kavanaugh that drove this truck. So nice going. And, uh, the next morning, we're out at, uh, we're down at the Diamond Joe for the TH Salute to Women, um, where we got a little closer look at some of the fantastic women that make things go around here. And, uh, it's outnumbered in that room as I am at this table. It's a pretty good feeling.
That was a long list, Mr. Jones. Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, Mr. Sprank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, we, we, unfortunately, a lot of us run into each other at the similar events. So I won't try to re-mention all the same things we were all at. Um, but, um, the memorial for Joyce was really moving. Thank you for putting that together, Laura. So I know the family greatly appreciated that. Um, but the one, a couple of things that I'm on the boards of the DRA and of course, the Greater Dubuque, I really enjoyed that Greater Dubuque meeting because we got, they talked about how retail works and how our community isn't just comparing ourselves with, like, like Cedar Rapids. We're talking about, like, communities in Florida of the same size. So it was really interesting to understand the logistics of that a little better. Um, so that was that day. The following, that Saturday, I had a very, very busy Saturday on the 28th, where my neighborhood association, the Northland Neighborhood, did their annual yard sale, which is a nice fundraiser, as well as Clower manufact, we partnered with Clower Manufacturing, and Clower Manufacturing did a nice job fair, where they also had a bunch of little booths set up for other organizations all along the B Branch. So it was a lot of nice cross-pollination that day. And if, I know I ran into a couple of us at the Latin Fex, the Latinx Festival, which, that's a party. I, that was a very good afternoon. I just, I couldn't imagine the amount of work that those folks put into that. So that was just amazing. So, and then I know I got a couple more things. Um, yeah, I just, a lot going on. I had a lovely time. I, I don't know, didn't run into anybody down there, was, um, at the wonderful, the Bluff Strokes Art Festival, where here we had a big art sale in my neighborhood. So I was appreciative of that event. So, otherwise, that's all I got. Thank you.
Ms. Russell?
Well, I, I attended many of the things that have already been mentioned, but I also wanted to add, of course, there was a tree planting at Four Mounds, where we planted 20 trees, um, in the historic site, where they had lost a lot of trees that were just really old or due to a storm. Um, and again, volunteers come out and make a difference for our community. And I really enjoy running into all of my colleagues at all these great events across our community. It just shows, um, the great involvement that we have.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Yeah, and we ran into each other at the Symphony on, on Saturday night, which was incredible. I mean, we live in a city our size with a symphony orchestra that is absolutely incredible. And I, I encourage anybody who gets the opportunity to go and, and catch one of those, um, shows, because it is, it was, it was great to celebrate Maestro and Trilligaters' 25th year, and, and it was wonderful to see that. Um, very, another very gracious individual who's done some great work in the community. Mr. Jones, I see your hand.
One other thing jumped out at me. Um, I think you all got in the mail and, and digitally, that Greater Dubuque Development developed a new relocation guide, a beautiful color piece. Um, I couldn't have been more impressed. I was so impressed, I sent the digital copies to everybody I know in my family, um, and to a couple of friends, a neighbor and another friend, who fairly recently relocated to Dubuque. And, and their response was, I'm really eagerly enthusiastic about what a, what a great piece it is. So hats off to Greater Dubuque. That was a, a great publication. It's going to grow the, and along with many other things, it's going to grow the population of the city.
Thank you. Well, you're right. We run into each other a lot of these different things. Um, I just, I've said this before at this table, I, I appreciate you all so much and your leadership in the community. I mean, we, I, I, and, and your presence in the community. I think there are elected officials who don't spend that much time in their community at times, and I, I find that tragic, and it's not the council that we sit on. So thank you for doing that. Um, and I also thank you for your, your congratulations with the Iowa League of Cities. Um, I'm honored to be elected as president this year. Um, Dubuque is a leader in this. And, and the Iowa League of Cities is leading in the state. And I think it's really important that we have played, um, such a great role in that throughout the years. And I, I'm looking forward to this year. Uh, we need to band together, cities of 60,000, and, um, 300,000, and 900, and 500. I mean, we need to work together, because we all live under the same laws of the state, and those, those laws need to be influenced by the people that are living in those cities and towns. And also, we need to help each other out. There's a lot of technical assistance that we all need. This is not easy, running a city, I think everybody knows. Um, some cities have just an Adrian, just a city clerk there to be able to do everything that's happening. So it's a real challenge, and I appreciate that there's an organization that, uh, that brings everybody together in that way. Um, and I also appreciate that people came together to, uh, to bring Denver Air Connection to the airport. Um, it is a community effort, Mr. Jones, but I appreciate, uh, your, your kind words. And it was great to see that plane and the entire staff. I mean, the airport was absolutely buzzing when we were out there. It was great to see action at the Dubuque Regional Airport again. I can't wait for those flights to start. It's going to be, um, great to see that again. All right. Well, just a little bit more work to do for us tonight. We have a closed session, so I would entertain a motion, please.
Sure. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Move the council going to closed session to discuss purchase or sale of real estate in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa.
Second?
Jones, second by Resnick. For the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Karen Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We are in closed session.